Yeah, it's in the forty-four hundred one.
And it's put some blackberries in?
Six of them. So far.
He's a guy.
Yeah.
I got some friends who live in Mesa. Like, in town, like, central. Is that an Indian school or Elmore School?
Mm-hmm.
What kind of that one?
Yeah.
That is not four fifty-five.
We're in the Twilight Zone.
It's real early.
There he goes again.
It's a hundred and five at the Arizona Peaks. And I know it's probably a cool front for you.
Right, right.
It's a cool front for us.
Parka weather.
Yeah.
Right, I'm saying six, you ready to go?
Seriously, that's what happens every time my parents come up.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, September sixth. Tonight, we have an established forum, and I look for a motion to approve minutes for August fifteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve minutes from August fourteenth, twenty twenty.
August fifteenth?
Oh, August fifteenth.
First by bill, then by a second?
Second.
Second by... Sorry, I'm writing here, sorry. Okay, on my favor, sorry.
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? None opposed, all right. Minute approved. Recognized person's not on the agenda. Go ahead and come forward. Yeah, actually, go ahead and stay there. Yes, ma'am.
I personally want to get clarity on a murky situation that's happening with the county. And, uh, because I've heard rumors that the property might be annexed into the township, I have real serious questions about the casino project. It is a situation where emotions go wild, or high, whatever you wanna call it, and, uh, real representation for the townspeople, I don't think is given. So, my question is, have you started appealing to the annexation of this property?
So, to answer that question to the best of my abilities, and my right-hand man right over there is gonna kinda help me with that, but, uh, the city will have nothing to do with the annexation of that, and based on fact, it's Tribal Land Council. So, we will not see any annexation, we probably won't see any plant development, because it's all gonna be based on the tribal design of, uh, plant, uh, I'm sorry, uh, tribal annexation.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm basically now bugging into the void. If I want to get answers about this mess, I have to deal completely with the county.
I would strongly encourage you to go to the Commissioners' meeting on Fridays, uh, Friday mornings. That's, and they would probably have-
Do you need a passport for that?
No, ma'am.
Because it's in a courthouse.
No, ma'am. Uh, County Commission meetings are open to the public. Okay? Awesome. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Yeah, you all know me, I'm Chris.
Hi, Chris.
So, I'm here just because you guys asked me to answer some questions, so have at 'em. I'm here representing the Westside Sewer District. And I don't really have anything to say personally. I think it's all been said, and I think we have to respond to Meridian, and that's who we have to respond to. I didn't know that the council was involved in this issue, short of what the conversations have been, of us seeking out information. So, I'm here for clarity.
Okay, um, I'm blind-signed it right now, so...
Are you referring to-
The email that I received from you?
Public records request the city's-
No, that, that you were requesting testimony for me to be here. I don't need to be here, personally.
So, that notification letter that you received is a public entity to be here?
No, it said you were requesting testimony from me in regards to the Colethorpe Commons Project. If I read it correctly, if I'm not, hey, I can, no, I don't got no problem.
He's here on behalf of the district.
Right.
Obviously, when we get to that.
So...
When we get there, we'll...
Well, I, as you well know, I requested to be on it so that I could be here, and I don't know the procedures here. I just didn't wanna miss the opportunity to ask you your questions.
I understand. Perfect, appreciate that, thanks, Chris.
I have a senior follow-up question.
Yes, ma'am.
Senior moment. So, the water rights come completely out of the county, or how does this work?
Again, that's a great question for Commission. Uh, Commissioner Bud Corbus is actually working on the water for Elmore County right now, and that would be a really good question to ask him.
Bud Corbus? Is he town, uh, county?
He's County Commissioner.
County?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I thought they changed leadership.
Uh, well, there's three.
Oh, I see.
They switch off every week, they're a little funny.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
So Bud Corbus also takes care of the town?
No, Bud, Bud Corbus is only county, he's County Commissioner with three others. Um, he's working with the county to do a water project to make sure that Elmore County has enough water. But that, again, that's all county work, not city work. So, he has nothing to do with the city.
Falls the city's authority to fight with the county or things like that?
Great question, Paul.
It's jurisdictional. So, within the city, um, the city has jurisdiction within its boundaries. The county obviously surrounds the city, and they have jurisdiction for anything that's outside of the city.
Because what-
And then, the, the casino project that you're, uh, referring to, that is outside the city limits, is my understanding. Uh, and so, and it's, they go, that's a whole nother separate jurisdictional question, which-
So, my, yeah, I know, but, uh, my understanding is that everybody goes into the same aquifer. We are, we are not, we are actually pumping water out of the ground for our need, the city need?
Yes, that would be correct. That'd be correct.
But there's just one aquifer, da-dah.
Mm-hmm. Yes. This has been an issue for-
A long time.
Yes, ma'am. That's why.
I'm a kid, I stick my foot in it.
No, you're, wh- welcome, welcome to the party. Um, yeah, it's been, it's been a known issue for quite some time, which is why the county is looking at different options. One of them is the Anderson Dam Race, which I recommend going on to the county's website, taking a look at that. Uh, there's a lot of information there. Asking Bud Corbus at the Commissioner meeting about it, too. Um, he can answer all those questions for you.
Okay. I promise I won't butt in.
No, good questions, appreciate that, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
When did you say the heat?
Fridays.
Friday?
I do wanna say Friday mornings.
In the morning, yeah.
Nine AM.
In the courthouse.
Yes.
In the courthouse basement.
Oh, the courthouse basement? Oh, yeah, okay.
Awesome. Great questions, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right on to our public hearing and action. This evening, right off the bat, we have an action item for a planned unit development to rezone an R4 to an R4 PUD for the Colethorpe Commons from the Meridian Development. It's a request by the Meridian Development, uh, for a rezone from an R4 to an R4 Planned Unit Development, uh, for the Colethorpe Some Commons subdivision. The request would allow for a master plan development, providing sixty-four attached single-family townhouses, configured in ten two-story buildings, varying in four, five, seven, eight, and nine units. The development provides assigned covered and uncovered tenant parking, three electric vehicle charging stations, open space amenities, including two playgrounds, community pavilion, bicycle racks, and a walking jogging path throughout the site. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, we are experiencing a minor technical difficulty, I hope.
Okay.
Can I get a five-minute recess?
Okay, um, absolutely. Five-minute recess? Five, five-minute recess? We'll be back in, uh, in five minutes, that would be six, six-
Fourteen.
Six fourteen.
Way to go, Paul.
Hold on, just remember, you're still, hey, you're still being recorded.
Engineers looked at our sewer. Because we know regardless whether they go through this West Side Sewer District, or if they were to go through the city, the end game is the same.
Gotcha.
We process all of that.
Okay.
We know regardless which path it takes, that there is sufficient capacity for the proposed development.
Gotcha, okay, that's what I needed clarification with.
Okay, just tap right in.
And with that, turn my time over to the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, esteemed Commissioners and City Staffs, thank you for allowing us to present and to offer just a brief review, I think. This is the same presentation that you saw initially, so I will skip through fairly quickly. Feel free to interrupt me if you have questions about a specific slide, and we can always go back and forth. Okay, so we have a location of the proposed community investment in relation to the rest of the city, demarcated and read. Talk about the need for housing. This shows the existing conditions of what the site looks like currently in plan view. And these, the next few images show it, this was earlier this year, a little closer to springtime, so the green grass is not green anymore. And so this is, these are, these first two shots are located on Garrett Street. So this is Colethorpe on the right. This is also on Colethorpe. So this is interior. This is the intersection between Colethorpe and Jerome. This is on Jerome, standing right next to the stop sign that you saw on the previous slide. This was taken, oh, two weeks ago, so it's more indicative of what the site looks like right now. So this shows a bird's eye view of the proposed layout, locations of buildings, the size of the buildings in relation to the site. It shows the circulation, interior circulation as well. This one shows, excuse me, a plan view with the streets, street names, the size of streets, buildings, amenities as well. As Mr. Cherry has indicated, we're providing a number of amenities in the site for the tenants and for their use. We have our plats for the, as part of the preliminary plat application. Again, plating with the infrastructure shows the size of the water and sewer lines that are interior to the site. We talk about the need for having a water conservation mindset for landscaping and how vital that is, especially when it's 100-plus degrees outside. So these are all native plantings. What little grass we do have, buffalo grass, and then we have native trees, and these are examples of those. Out of respect, should I?
Say again.
Out of respect, should we wait, or?
Uh, no, I think you can continue.
Continue?
Yes.
I believe you've seen the renderings, so I'll skip through those fairly quickly as well. And so these are the types of units, now the colors are subject to change, but this is generally speaking what the finished product would look like. So this would be the new roadway, this would be Chi, and the intersection of the existing, excuse me, existing road of Garrett. Again, a little bit different view, so you can see we have over 50% covered parking, that's closer to 75% for the tenants. Here are the floor plans, this would be the first floor plan for the units. I chose a fourplex to enlarge the floor plans a bit. This would be the second floor of the fourplex. They are all two-bedroom, two-bath units. Shows an accident metric. They will not all be one color, by the way, we will vary the color by unit. This shows, this would be a view in the morning. This road right here is Garrett, and then Colethorpe over on the right-hand side. This is Chi Drive that runs and connects at the far end would be Jerome, and at the near end is Garrett. And I think that we are prepared to answer any questions you may have regarding the proposal.
Okay, Commissioner, real quick, just remember, the first one we are looking at tonight is the rezoning of the R4 to an R4 PUD. We are not making a decision currently on the preliminary plat, so just keep that in mind as we're having this conversation. So I'll have you step back, and I'll go ahead and open it up to the public for comments.
Mr. Chairman, before we step on to public comment, just so the Commission is aware, and so Council is aware, several people that may testify tonight have been customers of my business, and I do business with their business, so just to put that out on the table, that those relationships in business will not affect my decision.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. For those of you who would like to have a comment, please limit the three minutes. Also, please make sure you state your name and location in which you are presiding. And if you already have heard something that is commented that you want to comment as well, please try to refrain based on time, coming up and repeating something that's already been said. So, again, this is for rezoning of an R4 to an R4 PUD.
Hello, Lonnie Black, CNA Auto, right next to the thing. The question here really for me is, is infrastructure and desired. We want this here, and can we support it? Now, there's room in the sewer, everyone acknowledges that. It's can we get it there in the pipes? The state said we don't need an impact study. It's not that the airbase road doesn't have room, it's the side streets and how we're going to get it there. So Taryn come and spoke to me a couple times, there is, so there's 64 units, we're getting more than the state minimum on parking, .0075, 129 units. These aren't 700-square-foot apartments for kids, these are 13, 1400 square townhouses for people. So the problem is going to be, these people are going to have free cars, you're going to have all this infrastructure, you're going to have school buses, you're going to have baristas, you're going to have all the people in there. We've seen some imaginary roads. That road next to my shop is 27 feet. Richie or Kitty come and looked at it and said, "You're right, it's got to be at least 35 feet, it's got to be widened." I, we've seen some beautiful pictures of imaginary roads. I would love the Council, could we look at the real roads around there? I have a flash drive with a picture of the roads.
Paul? It's not precluded, if you want to entertain a picture of the road.
Okay, go for it.
Not that I think you would do anything bad, but that's not my laptop, and I'm not going to put something that's not mine, so is that a comment with you?
Light on mine.
Okay. These photos right here, Lonnie.
Yeah, please. Okay, here's the photographs when people came for the ribbon-cutting thing at the barista. I don't want to be the guy that has people's cars towed away, but look at, so this is Garrett, my business is on the right, and there's cars parked everywhere there. So we can imagine what that's going to look like when we have 128 cars with half again per person, where they're going to be, they're going to be on those side streets, and those 39 off-street parkings, those aren't even penciled in yet, that's speculative. So when you look at your map, there's 39 cars parked there. If half the people have an extra car, you're going to see where they're going to be.
Do you just want me to pull them up?
Yeah, yeah, pull them up on this time. So here's a picture in front of my house on 10th and 18th, and look at the width of this road, it's 42 feet, we got 27 feet, and we have less traffic here than what we're going to have on Garrett. Here's some existing pictures of the roadway as it exists now, and we're only going to fix half, we're going to make the developer fix half of this. So my question is, what are we going to do about all the rest of the traffic that's going to be on this road? Because there it is right now. Keep clicking. And that's just what those are, is pictures of how the other side of those roads look right now. We only got a couple more. There's the middle of the road. That's seven feet, that's right in the direct pathway coming off Garrett's feet right now.
Try to sum up if you can, even though I'm used to this thing.
Comment about those holes, they're hard to avoid, there's an oncoming car, somebody has to bite the dust.
Now, this is 14th by the school, where we only had the developer fix one side. That's what we ended up with. Is that what we want at Garrett Street and in this area? That's my question, what are we doing about the rest of the road? That's what we got on that deal. And there was just a measurement on how wide it was from curb to curb, where we have off-street parking on both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Eric Castro, I live at 149 North Lytham Avenue, which is right next to the development that's going to be put in. And I'm just going to tie into Lonnie's discussion about the width of the roads. I personally went out and did some measurements at the streets that are facing the development. I came up with an average of about 23 to 24 feet wide, and as he mentioned, the recommended minimum width is 35 feet, so even on the wider portions of that road, we're still about 10 feet short of what the minimum width should be on there, which I believe is a concern, especially when it comes to emergency services in the area. I can tell you for sure that trying to pass two wide vehicles through there is quite a challenge, and by having, say, UPS truck, FedEx truck on that road, same time a fire engine or an ambulance is trying to come through there, it's going to vary, or it's going to extremely limit the ability of being able to get emergency services, not only to Colethorpe Commons, but to surrounding houses in that area. And also, with this development, we're looking at making it family-friendly, which I'm all for, but that also means that we're going to have kids walking down that street, or down Colethorpe to West Elementary. With no sidewalks on Colethorpe in general until you start getting to West Elementary, there's no safe place for the children to walk heading up to West Elementary down Colethorpe. Also, prior to my life, working at a bank here in town, I did work in general maintenance for buildings. I can tell you as a fact that one of the first things that property managers will cut their budget on is property management maintenance. With lack of proper maintenance, you can have things like pipes breaking, which causes health issues, you can have poor electrical, which leads to fire hazards, and the poor maintenance of the building in general can lead to low property values, which is something I think everybody who lives in this area would like to avoid, is the drop of property values. And to say that they're not going to do it would be a surprise to me, because if you look at any other similar development here in town, you can see to some degree it's dilapidated, it needs repair, it needs work done. So to say they're not going to do it is going to surprise me, because every other development that is a similar design and structure is in poor maintenance.
My name is Aubrey Hart. I am at 179 Northwest Jerome Avenue, right next to Eric, and I am facing the proposed development. My concerns are the density of the development. I know they talked about medium density, and it does not fit into the aesthetic of the rest of the neighborhood, as far as density and the style, the townhouses. We don't have townhouses in our neighborhood, we have one apartment complex on Foster Avenue, which is another block over. The rest of them are single-family dwellings. And again, I think everybody's touched on the vehicles, I think the one thing that hasn't been touched on with vehicles is not only the, you know, average of two cars per family, but friends, friends and family that come to visit. That only leaves them parking on the street, which is going to crowd our streets, crowd our homes, and especially with streets that are already too narrow to accommodate that, I feel like that could be a significant problem. Again, infrastructure, I have seen the existing infrastructure, I've lived in that area off and on for 40 years. It's problematic on occasion, and I feel like flooding one particular area might be buying into a bigger problem. I was told in the beginning, before this was, you know, when the property was bought, that it would be maybe a couple of townhouses or a few duplexes. This is clearly not the case. Also, I was told they were looking at family housing. Family housing in, as a Realtor, I can tell you, family housing is typically three-bed, two-bath, that is the greatest need for family housing in our area. These are two-bed, two-bath, which is more suggestive of very small families or roommate-type situations. And again, none of that is particularly problematic, but it doesn't solve the need for family housing. And, let's see, oh, street lights and light pollution was another concern. These are street lights that are going to be on, you know, on all night, and I guess they're going to come on in different areas. So we're going to, like, suddenly at 3:00 in the morning, have a light shining in our face out of nowhere, you know, unless you have blackout curtains in your bedrooms. But a lot of us don't, you know, because that's never been an issue before. So it's just very disruptive to our entire, our existing way of life.
Thank you, Aubrey. Hi, Misty.
Hello, Chair, Commissioners, you guys know my, already, Misty Pierce, I am the only elected official in this area, as a precinct committee person, so I represent everybody that lives there. You guys have heard that most of them are not for this. It clashes with the urban areas, it clashes with the single-family homes that are over there, there's sheep, chickens, goats, all kinds of stuff, you're going to have animals getting hit because people aren't going to care, they're going to fly out of the apartment complex on their way to work, wherever, and I'd like to know who's going to pay for the stoplight, because ITD is eventually going to ask for a stoplight on American Lea, or Air Base Road, and Haskett in that area with all this new building that's going on, and the citizens were extremely upset that the city had to pay a match grant to put the stoplight at 18th, I believe it was at $80,000, that was what the city paid, the other half was paid at a match. I don't remember the numbers, I got it from NINA years ago, but the citizens were really upset for that stoplight cost so much. That was in 2017, what's it going to cost now? It's going to be astronomical. If the developer's not going to put it in or pay half of it, the citizens aren't going to want to pay for it either. The charging stations, we have a charging station up at Walmart. Every time I see a car, which is very rarely, maybe once every five times I go up there, it's from out of state, it's not from Elmore County. Nobody in Elmore County really has a Tesla, or a charging, you know, a vehicle, an EV. I remember with some of the workshops, and the last time that Jeff was here, you guys, he went over what you guys are supposed to be protecting under State Statute 6765, and that's property rights. These people have property rights just as well, whether they're in the city or not, and I hope that you please take my constituents' concerns in consideration.
Thanks, Misty.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Darryl, the Australian Stream, I used to live on Jerome, I'm currently renting to Eric, and I'm not going to really repeat myself, or repeat anything, but I have the same concerns as the previous speakers, Lonnie, Eric, Bree, and Misty. So I'm just going to save us time and just let you know, me and my husband, Andrew Toth, agree, and agree with the concerns, if that makes sense.
Sorry, did you say your address for me?
Oh, it's going to be 1265 Owahi Court, I live up in the city, next to 10th and 10th.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else?
My name is Don Guest, I live in the area, a few blocks away on Foster, but I kind of have concerns about some of the kids too, you know, and I don't know their age groups, are they going to get bused even though it's that close, the buses do come by there? But also, I've seen the pictures of the exits, I see one was on Garrett, that looks like in the picture here, up there. We're how far back from the stop signs, are they going to be cutting over into Lonnie's place there to make their turns out of there, if a big truck happens to come in there or something, for the barista or any of the rest of it, for moving in and out? No big moving vans when they move. So also, I didn't get a good look where the park was at, or is that in the middle towards, in the middle of it, towards the Air Base Highway, amongst that, there's two houses or something? Yeah, and like, kind of hard from the beginning, like, on the roads, they are an error out there, so, I mean, if anybody gives up, it's going to have to use the inside, I think, where they're building. Also, do all these people, are they all going to be people that's working on the base? Are they going to be working the same shift as the rest of them, or are they going to be different shifts? You know, another thing was hit on was like car parking, you know? Are they going to have enough parking in there for, if somebody comes and sees them? Or how many cars are they going to be allowed to have in there of their own? If both people drive, or they got kids, I don't know what age group's going to be coming in, but... And do we really think there's going to be that much of a need for the charging station there? I don't know, I mean, I don't know how these people are, but, you know, if they're going to be driving in 10 cars? Am I running out of time?
Yeah, I think that's time done.
Let me finish filming this up and put it here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this. Taryn, if you want to go ahead and come back up, if you don't mind? Besides Taryn, it gets things going, Commissioner, I'm just going to remind you again, this is specifically just to rezone, this is not about the preliminary plat yet, so this is only of the rezoning to an R4 to an R4 PUD. Just keep that in mind as we have our discussions. Anybody want to start us off?
Yeah, I've got a few questions, is that's all right?
Grab, go for it.
So Building 3 here with the seven units, there's not a, let's see, a direction on here, which is that it's west or not, but it's closest to Jerome Street and Colethorpe Avenue. On Building 3 here, are there windows facing towards this property that we're encasing in here?
On the plat?
Yeah. Okay, I got ahead of myself, excuse me, let me put it in reverse here, okay? So dwellings for multiple and four units be outright permitted to use. Is the density, I guess more of like a rhetorical question, is the density necessary? I guess is the question. Does it seem like that matches most of the housing that's around it? In my opinion, it doesn't. I have seen the apartments, I think it's on, is it Foster, or? I have seen the apartments over there, it's nowhere near the type of density that we're looking at here. I guess that's more of a comment than anything else, now that we're just on the R4 PUD, I'll have more questions with the plat, but I just wanted us to put that out there.
Actually, let me jump on that real quick, Travis, I agree with you on that when it comes to, so an R4 for that zoning district, dwelling of multiples of three to four units are just outright permitted, and what we're really discussing here is whether or not we allow more density in an area that's already been designed and zoned for three to four units. The conversation that came up within constituents are, density, density is an issue. I guess my question is, why not just R4? Why push more in and not just stick with R4?
So, the biggest driver of density is economics. You've heard me talk about the cost of construction, the lack of labor force, the cost of land, cost of infrastructure, all of those things come into play. We hear oftentimes, well, we want the developer to pay for the streets, the sidewalks, the schools, we want the developer to pay for everything. If there's no way to get a return on investment, nobody's going to develop here. So we're really not asking for a much higher of a density. I may be able to lose a couple of units, maybe get down to 60, and make them all fourplex townhouses. And so the reduction that we would be looking at is really not much. That would allow us to have a buy-right property or development. The idea, again, is to help try to keep costs for rents and things lower. So I won't go on about various complexities in trying to achieve that, but it's no small task.
Sorry. No, go ahead, continue, I'm sorry.
I'll sum it up really quickly. So the idea is that we have, it is a community development, the density is not that high, this is, townhouses are by nature, medium density. We, with 4.2- We, with 4.2 acres, were allowed 20 units per acre. We're asking for 64, not 86, units. So we're well below where we could be theoretically. We're doing townhouses and not apartments. Apartments are also...
Is that 64 with your setbacks changed? Or continuing with the R4 setbacks that you aren't gonna change? That you're requesting to change?
Correct, so there's one setback, that's it, that we're requesting to change. So when you say rear...
Rear yard building setback.
I believe it's, is it this one again? Which is 10, that'll butt a brieza that has lots of open space. The brieza itself, I've seen the plans, the brieza itself is, excuse me, it's fairly small. And in working with the owner of brieza, he said, shoot, if we could have a built-in clientele, it would be beneficial for the businesses that are currently there. So, in an attempt to avoid being long-winded, I'm trying to summarize in a few things.
So, let me see if I can, correct me if I'm wrong in me trying to like summarize what I heard from you.
Okay.
So the difference between you planning just for an R4 and R4 PUD mainly comes down to building costs and the ability to be able to finance the development?
Well...
I would say also, Elizabeth Kekaritz, given it's personally unlegal with the development. It also just makes for a much nicer development because one option would be to come back with townhomes on each on its own single-family lot, which would be allowed, or to come back and just really subdivide this up into a lot of little different lots. Versus by using the planned unit development, you're able to take advantage of having more common open space here and more amenities over here and clustering the parking over here. And so, we could get technically, if we wanted to, to the same density or much higher on four acres. But what the developer here has wanted to do is really look at it and say, let's make this a nicer place to live. Let's not just divide this up piecemeal to come in and build great big apartments. Or to divide this up into like, I don't know how many lots that would end up being, but into a whole bunch of different lots, all of which has four units on it. And so it really is trying to take advantage of the PUD process to make this a much nicer, albeit a little bit different than what's been done before here, but just a nicer development, a place that's more desirable to live.
She brings up a good point. Because if we were to do separate lots, I'm assuming we would need to have separate setbacks for each lot, as Brock is mentioning out here, or agreeing to. And then that R4 would need to be basically rezoned anyways because we, I mean, if they're planning on separating the lots, right?
Well, currently, the subject property is R4. So they could come and just do buy right zoning. And you would see a product where you could do fourplexes on their own individual lot. They would have to have their own parking, everything else. It would be super condensed multifamily projects right next to each other.
Gotcha.
That's something that is allowed currently by right.
In an R4?
In an R4, which the property is currently so.
Does that make sense?
Kind of. Can you help me out for those of us who don't know real estate that well?
So if, I mean, if what I'm assuming is correct, if you have a subdivision, right? Each one, in a subdivision, single-family, each one of those lots is gonna need to have a certain amount of setback. It will lower the density, but then it'll probably need to be rezoned, correct?
No, there would be no rezoning necessary.
Gotcha.
The applicant could technically just apply for a plat with each fourplex being on its own lot. As spoken by the applicant, in doing that, the requirement is different in that each individual lot, which would have its own fourplex, has to be, has to have all of the amenities and components of a fourplex development, all within that one square. So, for example...
All in that one small lot.
You would have to have one of those platted out, which have the four dwelling units, which has eight parking spots, which has all the green space, which has the trash enclosure. Everything would have to be in there. Sometimes we see it for infill development, not necessarily for, this is kinda quasi infill slash green fill for something of this size. It would just make everything tiny and tight.
Now, okay, now, on that note, let me ask, would that be financially smart move?
That's gonna be my next question.
Because it's all based on the money, right? It's all based on the money, and that's why where the PUD is here is because what we're trying to do is alleviate the overall cost of development so that we can have lower, you know? So, going the route of, let's say we keep this in R4, would it be in your financial benefit to do that? No.
I think you're looking at me and I'm looking at you. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Commissioner, we have to go back and run all of the numbers to determine that, but that's not where I necessarily see, either way, that's not where I necessarily see the benefit. The benefit of the PUD rezone is to be able to compile that open space and to make it nicer and to make it a better place to be. I'm sure that we could go back and run all the numbers and determine if it was financially feasible or not. It just doesn't become the sort of place where, it just becomes a really kind of bizarre, cut-up-looking place to be, given the economics here in Mountain Home right now, where there's such a tight crunch for housing. It might make sense, but those are things that we couldn't answer right now.
Okay.
So the way I'm understanding it is, we've got two ways we can go through this. We leave it in R4 and they're gonna put, they're gonna put something in there and it's gonna be super condensed, but because it's a PUD and according to the city code, basically what they're doing is they're encouraging developers to use a creative approach in land development, which is where they're bringing in the open spaces. They're bringing in, you know, yeah, I mean, we don't really have a whole lot of electric cars in town, I agree, but they're bringing in different types of amenities and using the land in a creative method. Does that make sense? Instead of having to like condense everything into one lot. Does that make sense?
It does make sense to me. I'm just still stuck on, how come you can't? Why can't you do this without a PUD?
Brock?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Technically, just giving you the facts as are. They can do it without a PUD. And they can make it more dense without a PUD and have that by right.
So then they can do like apartments?
They could, as long as they get all of those components. We would have to do the design review and make sure they have every single thing.
Right.
But, and I'm looking at council and he's looking at me, if they were to present a preliminary plat which meets the property development standards for the R4 zone, which meets the multifamily design standards, everything's there, I don't know how much bandwidth this body would have with them meeting all of their standards by right to potentially deny it. I don't know.
I could tell you part of the answer. The density is R4. And the density, if it's an R4 PUD, the density remains R4. That part's not changing. It's the product that you're putting together. So you can have your classic cookie cutter type thing where each lot or each fourplex would have to have, you know? And I'm being facetious, but here's your choice. For a traditional straight R4, you'd get a 10 by 10 patch of grass on everybody's lot. Or if you use the PUD concept, where you put in a row like that, now you have a park that's 100 by 100. And then it becomes something that's usable. So that's the purpose behind the PUD. That's why you use it as a tool. In certain areas, it makes more sense to provide a product that is gonna be more affordable for the person that's trying to live there as opposed to buying, you know, a single-family residential type scenario. And then additionally, the idea is that the bargain, the bargain that you get is, yes, each individual unit is a little bit smaller. They're all condensed together a little bit more. And then over here, now you have an amenity that you could never have had otherwise. That's the method behind amendments. But in R4s and R4s, that part doesn't change. Ironically, the density will remain the same in that regard. And they could technically go higher.
Okay, Bill.
By another 20, 16 units, 16.
According to the current zoning, yep.
If they wanted to.
Mr. Chair, the one thing that was brought up by the community members was the homogenous up to the neighborhood. And part of our design of the community development plan is new housing should be compatible to the other uses. This seems like odd duck compared to all the single-family homes that's gonna be around it. Just get past the PUD and all that, but does it match the character of that existing landscaping over there? The character of the other homes?
So can I bring up, there on Tyndale and then on North 9th, you have townhomes there already. You have, they're not, they're duplexes basically, but they're sold as townhomes where they're basically two units that are together and they can be, they can be sold as townhomes separately. So they're not sold as duplexes. And then you have duplexes over on Wood Duck, which is on the other side of that area as well.
Is it a single story or double story?
They are, I believe they're all single-story.
Which matches the kind of community that's over there, this time.
Do we have a, can we do a GeoMap on it? Okay, that's my biggest concern, is the property rights. Both sides got property rights understood. But if we're gonna use this guide as a community plan and document, how do we bring in new development that matches what's existing and make it seamless?
We're not connected.
Again?
Just the Wi-Fi's not connected.
And then isn't Sky, I forgot what it's called. There's two other, there's apartment, yeah, apartment complexes. Akosio and the other one that's over there on the other side too. Yeah.
I don't know the Wi-Fi password. My computer's disconnected.
We're still on it.
Okay. Continue your discussion.
But I agree, Billy. I see where you're coming from. Because this is, you're having basically a development that's gonna be two-story versus the single-story units that you have.
And I understand we got the burden of housing and that's the whole community and especially micron's gonna build, it's gonna be more crunch. But existing landowners, it doesn't match the existing character of it. Like you said, townhomes on, I don't know what street that was, but...
Tyndale.
So it looks similar to the single-family. So it kind of congruent with it.
This is not, in my eyes, not the same. Especially when you go from two-story to that, and we can't talk about the plat yet, but that was my biggest...
I'm gonna agree with... Discuss that.
I'm gonna agree with Billy on that. Looking at our rezone criteria from the staff report, the proposed use to be designed, constructed, operated, maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity and will not change the essential character of the same area. I agree that this is not exactly harmonious with that in appearance, presentation with the surrounding area.
So, Commissioner, I think we're slowly flooding our way into the preliminary...
The preliminary plat.
Yes.
And kinda off the zoning to rezone. So, let's do this. Do we have a motion for the zone from an R4 to an R4 PUD?
We do have one question before we go that far. As I understand, what I can glean from our staff report maps, does any of this property both straddle city and county currently? And does that have an effect on...
No. Is that a question, Mr. Chair?
Go first.
I apologize. No, it currently is all within the city. What it, the only component that it would straddle is if you look at the future land use map, which is in your staff report, is you do have a small portion, which the future street or land use calls as commercial. And then you have a portion which is residential. When you look to the comprehensive plan, the portion which is commercial does call for apartments as a transition product. So that is the one component of the request that it does straddle is you do have two different future land use designations that that property is currently on.
Does this property comprise any border of city and county?
No. Listen up again.
Has Garrett Street been annexed?
Or Jerome, I forgot my name.
Has Garrett or Jerome been annexed into the city?
With...
They have not.
With this annexation from Centerline, I believe that Garrett would have been annexed.
And that would be the west side of Garrett then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Commissioner? A motion?
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny the rezone of 4.1 acres located east of Jerome Street, south of Cuthbert Avenue, and west of Garrett Street to Cuthbert Commons, R4 PUD planned unit development.
I have first, I have a second.
Yeah, second, and I want a second with a comment using goal of our community design, 8.10 item F, J, and M.
Okay, so I have a first by Travis, second by Billy. Uh, let's go down the line, Scott. Okay. Okay, Christina?
I'm gonna say nay.
Hello?
Nay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
I have to vote. I have to vote.
Yes, but I don't know if certain members understood what their yays and nays meant.
Thank you. Okay. So if you yay, you are in agreeance that you, we are denying rezoning. If you yay. If you nay, you are saying you would like to continue the discussion of possibly keeping the rezoning to PUD.
Some of us chair like to reverse them.
Well, let's do that again.
Yay.
Yay. Christina?
I stand by it. Nay.
Nay. Okay. Billy?
Yea.
Travis?
Yea.
And I'm gonna nay myself. So, that is a pass for it is not going to be rezoned.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure we provide this is a pass that the recommendation would be not for it to be rezoned.
Yes, it is a recommendation, it does, it is gonna go towards city council as well. City council will have the, after hearing our discussion and all of the burdens of fact, they'll make the discussion and based on that. So, with that, we skipped the preliminary plat for this evening for the not for the rezone. So, thanks for coming. We're gonna continue down this list here. We have no new business and we do have some old business commission that we need to take care of. So, old business would be the action item, the recommendation for additional use permit for the desert sage drive-through applicant, which was a conditional use permit to allow the drive-in establishment located in 2400 block of American Legion Boulevard. The proposed drive-through establishment will accompany an approximate 31,000 square feet healthcare facility and will allow for a drive-up pharmacy and drive-through clinic. We do have to make a motion. We have to make a motion to find its facts.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve fine effects for the action item, conditional use permit to this age, drive-through applicant for application PG 22-76.
You got a first by Billy, second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Scott, I'll start with you.
Uh, yea.
Christina?
Yea.
Okay, for me, Billy? Travis?
Yea.
Alright, motion passes, ladies and gentlemen. I believe that takes us to, we adjourn at 7:08.